seniors live, you know, sometimes the seniors are still living in their own homes. Sometimes they're in retirement communities or assisted living, sometimes living with their old children.
Smart J, I'll find his junior with who care.
And we help with cooking, driving seniors to their appointments, personal care.
Portland City Council.
We have something with bathing, dressing, grooming. We have a specialty with dementia care, Alzheimer's disease and other conditions. So that's, that's the background of, of the company. The service we provide is primarily a private paid service. And so in the holiday season, we really make an effort in our community service to reach out to those who may not be able to afford this type of service and partner with nonprofit organizations in the community this year. And then past years we're partnering with Meals on Wheels people to deliver gifts. And essentially the B S M to a senior program is a, is a holiday gift giving program where we partner with the nonprofit organizations and local retailers to, and it's, it's not an original idea, but we do a good job executing the, the idea, which is community members can come into a location where there's either a Christmas tree or a wreath with a cardstock ornament on it. And the ornament has written on it the name of a senior indeed, and a gift idea, maybe what they would want for Christmas. And the, the need is great. We're, we're serving low income seniors usually, so they're asking for things like new bath towels, stationery and stamps that correspond with their loved ones in the cold, in the cold season, which we can all relate with today, the scarves, you know, mittens, hats, things to keep them warm in their dwellings, which are sometimes low on heat because they're worried about the cost. And Home Instead Senior Care has found, this is the eighth year that this program has been running. And as a company, Home Instead Senior Care is a, is a franchise system. So we have locations all around North America and even in other countries. But this is my sixth year of doing the program. And there's also an east side location for Home Instead that's doing the program. I'm on the west side. And together we're providing 500, we're going to reach 550 needy seniors who would probably experience low, low mood or maybe isolated, being low mobility, sensory deficits, small social circles, their family members, maybe they're passed away, they're passing, passed away, people who don't get out a lot, they're not getting out to see the lights and the musical performances, the wonderful things of the holiday season. And also maybe they might not even have someone to come visit them, or they might not even get a gift. The Christmas season, you know, holiday season goes by without being acknowledged with a gift somehow. So Home Instead Senior Care recognized that problem and are working to solve it. The gifts are collected at the tree locations and we involve community members too for wrapping the gifts. And the delivery is done through Meals on Wheels people. And that's, you know, how we're, how we're kind of tying ourselves into nonprofits and being of service to those that we typically wouldn't be able to reach with our privately paid care services that we provide. So is there a website for them as well? There is. It's called B S Santa to a senior dot com. And that is where if you put in your zip code, you'll find the nearest tree location to you. And in the Portland metro area, we have, I think, 12.
The Pierce Mr. Phil's missing today.
To find one of these cardstock ornaments. And usually our retailers on the east side, we've got suppliers, coffee shops, some banks. On the west side, we have pharmacy gift shop, you know, Biomart, all the way out to Forest Grove we reach to. So, you know, the, to, to, to make a difference for 550 seniors in one holiday season, I think is a worthy contribution. And each year it grows and next year we'll, we'll do more. It's one of those programs that has kind of a name brand, but now that it's been going on enough, the media outlets recognize it, you know, from across the country. And we're just honored that we can be recognized by the city and have this proclamation before us. So, you know, raise the awareness of the program in another way and help people know how they can be involved to make a difference for a senior who can be isolated or homebound or not, not receiving gifts at Christmas time.
Well, thanks so much for being here today, G and U as well. We appreciate these kinds of gestures from the community, from business, nonprofits, some longstanding ones, of course, like Meals on Wheels. They do great work every day. So I think it was great that you teamed up with them to give these gifts out to folks. That's, that's a nice combination. So thank you. Let's hear it for us.
It's a pleasure. Thank you.
Take a file with you before you go. Come on up. Okay, let's move on to communications items. Eleven forty one.
Eleven forty one, request of Steve House to address council regarding Palpea Nature Park Trail Improvement Project.
House. Good morning.
If it sounds too loud, you gotta let me know.
My name is Steve House. Previously, I complained to council that the city is in rigid contract with the public and failed to comply with permit requirements for the Palpea Trail Improvement Project. Subs, quickly, Water Bureau did respond to my complaints and I believe essentially admitted to these allegations. During the process, Water Bureau committed to City Trail Guide. Since a commitment of public record, Trail Guide is the safety standard. It contains objective trail design criteria. BTS issued a permit and cited user safety and the Trail Guide is justification for project approval. Since, therefore, it's a requirement. Unfortunately, the Trail Improvement Project is not complying with Trail Guide specifications. And Water Bureau indicated they never intended to comply, from what I see. So in my mind, you know, it's kind of bait and switch on the public. Many of the trails, Water Bureau simply removed user restrictions and designated these trails as multi-user trails without bringing trails into compliance with the safety specification. Additionally, they built new trails that do not comply with the safety specs. In fact, they built trails that are almost the exact opposite of their stated commitments and permit requirements. These trails are unsafe due to non-compliance. They exhibit unsustainable high erosion rates or extremely dusty during peak summer usage. The Trail Guide states that hikers should be able to enjoy park trails without worrying about their safety due to high speed downhilling compliance on steep narrow trails with polluted sidelines. Another non-compliance is that the new Pioneer Orchard Loop is not complying with the specs for maintenance and power roads. It's already been damaged by trucks and is essentially unusual by fire trucks in, in case there was a major forest fire at Palpea. I've been bringing these complaints to the city for 18 months and it just seems like the city's pretty incapable of fixing these and other problems. At this stage, it seems like Water Bureau and its parks are now blaming each other, which I, I think is sort of fairly dysfunctional. And since the Water Bureau and Parks have been unable to bring the project into compliance with its requirements, I'm asking the mayor's office to hire an outside contractor who has expertise. And a good first step would be to survey the trails and post user signs at all intersections in order to achieve some compliance. Palpea is a 600 acre nature park with 14 miles of trails. So the lack of trail user signs is a safety issue, non-compliance in itself. Also, I would request a full project review for compliance by, with, with other issues for, for commitments and projects.
Mayor, if I could just make, first of all, Mr. House, thank you for coming in, testifying. We made a commitment, I think about six months ago, to take a fresh look at all of Mr. House's concerns. Frankly, there's hundreds of pages of documents and I believe recently I shared with all my colleagues, most recent, because responses, and I've been overseeing those to make sure that there's a timely response and a complete response. And I appreciate Mr. House's view and I, all we can do is give answers and provide documents. We can't apparently satisfy him on almost anything he's raised, but you now have all the documents. So if any of my colleagues believe that there's something further we can do on all ears, I believe you reached the limit of what we can do. And, and, and our system, we answer questions, we provide documents. It doesn't necessarily mean we always convince people. Mr. House, you have, you have sent almost an email a week for years. You have, you have submitted all kinds of requests. You have apparently a deep seated passion for this issue and I thank you for that. But I just want you to know, just so there's, just so there's no miscommunication.
You don't have personal knowledge of this. Your people said that they, there might be points.
I do, please don't interrupt me. There's been timely responses. We are taking people out of other responsibilities to get you responses to voluminous requests. I'm sorry we missed our response.
I got one response.
No.
One response.
Well, not to time and the place, Mr. House, but I want my colleagues.
Let, let him finish.
I want my colleagues to know that if they, in reviewing the record, have concerns, please bring those to my attention or to man's attention and we'll take a fresh look. There are limits to what we can do. I, I would say in defense of our bureaus, they have been very responsive. And that doesn't necessarily mean that Mr. House is not true, but they, they fulfill their responsibility. If there's something we missed, I'm, I will, I will look at fresh that.
Well, I appreciate you bringing this to the council.
Well, none of the things he says is true.
Well, let's not debate now. I appreciate you bringing it to our attention.
Yes.
He's gotten the document.
I guess I'll have to hire a law commander or something, sue the city just to get you people to comply with your own laws, your own contracts.
Maybe the environmental league defense.
Yes. These guys are, that is the biggest bunch of lies. You, in your response, you admitted you're in non-compliance. You said, "We never intended to comply with the city's Trail Guide." Nobody has ever met with me personally. I've sent these emails in and the people that, that keep talking to me say, "We don't know anything about trail design." It's just a.
Right to our attention. Thank you. Okay.
You know, when people stand up and lie.
Eleven forty two, request of Chris Olorik to address council regarding previous communications comments.
Mr. Olorik here this morning? Not yet. All right, go ahead. Eleven forty three.
Eleven forty three, request of Joe Rossi and Amelia Salvador to address council regarding the 2013 Portland East progress person up here award. And they cannot make it, they express their regrets.
Right. And eleven forty four?
Eleven forty four, request of Andy Hernandez to address council regarding preserve gateway area business and employment.
Hernandez? Okay, eleven forty five, please.
Request of David Red Thunder to address council regarding Presley Island.
David, you here? Come on up. Good morning.
Directive escape work. We'll ask him. Thank you very much. Good morning. Thank you for this opportunity to be here. Now, I've lived at Hayden for five years now and I, this might have involved because the Florida Portland said that there was a barren land and the eagles nested two miles away. Well, there's an eagle on the land, it seemed like barren. So as I started walking back there, I seen that there's over 30 black-nailed deer, the state bird, the western meadowlar also is roaming around there. And so as I followed 30 hours a year, listening to the city, the county commissioners over there, I, I heard about the jobs, about how important and all the money spent, but also there's a treaty from 1855, which Hayden was usual and a custom place for hunting. And I see all the abundance of animals back there and I realize that it's no, today it's still the same, hunting. Well, the eagles, every year it takes, hunters, they come, it's legal to hunt on Hayden Island. Their state line washes up on the shoreline of the porch property and it goes from 320 feet and that brings the hunters there where they, they sit in front of the grain, the grain marge and they shoot the geese that come there to feed. That's about 665 feet away from the eagle's nest. And so that was confirmed by Christopher Olorik, who was a sergeant of the Rangers. And there's five of them and they avoid them. So legally, hunters come and shoot the, shoot the deer and shoot the geese. And I just, I just think that that's a violation. And so. A foundation is being forged. I believe the development is being, in development is now happening right now because of the spoils. It said right here in the D E Q, it says that.
Mr. Thunder? The development is turning where?
On Hayden Island. Foundation is being forged. It says right here, it says that the ports will use the sediment as fuel material for future and commercial industrial development at West Hayden Island placement site, which to me is that development is going on right now at every speed. So involves, how long's your ask, what happens if the terminal isn't built here? What are we going to do with all the spoils that are set on the island? And so far, Tim Spencer, this, this had been at, the ammonia level had been at a whack, which means the ammonia didn't turn back into nitrates. And so they covered that up, which is a contamination. And so anyways.
Well, you're, you're out of time, but you've given us this material and I, we'll review it. Let me say it. I think, I think you, you raised some valid issues here, but I believe the situation is that even though the, the land is now not yet annexed to the city of Portland, that's what the planning commission was considering, what the council's not yet reviewed. So, so far the land is still outside of the city limits of Portland. But, but even, even in that condition, the port can seek state approval to put dredge material on part of the island. And that's what they're doing. So that doesn't inevitably lead to development. In other words, just because they're putting dredge material on the island, which they get to do in a number of places up and down the Columbia River, under state authority, that doesn't mean that the city of Portland has approved any kind of development there. We have not. And no development is possible there while the, the land is outside of the city limits as it is today. So it might look like the first stage of development and the port might even think of it as the first stage of development. But legally, they can't pour a foundation and build a building or build a dock or build anything else until this council has taken action. We haven't yet. So you have that safeguard for, for actual development. Doesn't mean they can't put sand, dredge flow sand on the island. They're doing that, they have been doing that for years, but that doesn't inevitably lead to development.
Thank you, Mayor. So just, Commissioner Boggs came to the island and he said that they would put the, the Indians and all the, with discussions. And it came upon the board, but there was no actually discussion about the, the nation and all the money they put into it. And now, he said they, they handled that in phases. Well, it went to some of the commissioner down there and now it's to your table. And I've seen, the first thing they did is they put this resolution of 38 ERIC and now I'd like this resolution of 36941 to discuss, to discuss how much money the tribe has put into there and how valuable, because it actually, the Columbia River is designated critical habitat for 13 different species that go to and from the ocean. And it says that the Hayden Island is the last stop because the tidal action, the fish actually use this tidal action before they get on the Columbia River and head to the ocean. And I looked down at the west, the Washington side of it and I see that there is no sandy beaches that they can have. So Hayden Island is a custom and useful place and one of the last places along the Columbia River that these salmonoids have a chance to continue on. And so I'd just like to let you know that there's, I see this, and every time a ship, when the ship is turned around, I see that this cross current sends these little salmonoids up on the beach and to where I call it, where they're fishing game, they said, yes, it's from the turning of the ships, they're cross currents and they send these little salmon, salmonoids up onto the beach.
So Mayor, since, since you and I are working together on the super fund issue, I just want to summarize what I see from these documents you've given us. One is you're raising a question about dredging and the placement of those materials on the island.
Yes.
Two is you're raising some questions about the whole process of considering annexation of West Hayden Island. So that's very timely. And third, most of the documents you've given us have to do with what you call tribal interests and are we observing, are we dealing with tribal government partners and observing treaties? And those are very important issues. And, and I, thanks for giving us this with the various sections. And I can assure you that as these discussions go forward, that is an important part of our consideration is engaging our tribal partners. So if, if we fall short on that, feel less known.
It's just more on the board. When it's put up on the board to hear people actually talk about what their nation has done, you know, because only, they made it on the board, but it's like, we've got the state bird back there, misting with all the dredge fines, the county dredge fines are there, eagle's nest is overlooking, I mean, either or, it's either have to destroy this nest or we preserve this nest. They're just right in the middle of this project, this terminal project. And anyway, thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Appreciate you bringing this to the public. Okay, did either Ed or Crystal connect it here this morning? Okay. And if not, let's, the consent calendar, I think we have four items that have been requested to be pulled. Eleven fifty one, eleven forty nine, eleven fifty four, and eleven fifty six.
Right. Can you say those again, Mayor?
Eleven forty nine, eleven fifty one, eleven fifty four, and eleven fifty six. Any others you request? Okay. So then let's take a vote, please, on the balance of the consent calendar.
No. Red.
Hi.
Fish.
Hi.
Yes.
Hi. Okay, now let's move to, time's certain, eleven forty six.
Eleven forty six, and the fiscal year 2013, 14 budget to include appropriations for funds to address human trafficking.
Thank you, Mayor House, and thanks to the council for your partnership on this important issue. As we struggled greatly during our budget discussions to meet the constraints that we were faced with, and we did an amazing job on that. As part of that discussion, we had a, a lot of testimony about services for survivors of human trafficking. We were not able to meet all of the needs as part of the budget process. So I'm bringing back the supplementary package, asking for a total of $250,000 in contingency to fund these vital services. Since the budget process, US Attorney Amanda Marshall and Portland State University would have another study that showed the extent of the challenge in our community. And it's an urgency that particularly young people and young adults ages 18 to 25 are not able to access the services they need to escape from this terrible slavery. I think that's no other way to describe it. And so I'd like to call Andrew Scott, the budget director, just to explain the mechanics of what we're doing here. He and Christine Moody have been very helpful in guiding me on just how we do this. Sometimes we would have put this in the budget monitoring process, which we did a few weeks ago. This is so important that after discussion with the mayor, we decided to bring it separately that Andrew can tell us specifically. What we're doing this week is allocating the funds and then before the end of the year, we'll be bringing back contracts for the federal projects to be. Thank you, thank you.
Thanks. Good morning. Andrew Scott, the city budget director. I'll be very brief. Yeah, what the ordinance does in front of you, events, the 1340 budget to improve appropriations, the district is referring to specifically in the council directs section, what it does is moves $190,000 out of general fund contingency into special appropriations. It moves $60,000 out of general fund contingency into the police bureau budget. And then again, it shows that $250,000 total reduction from that general fund on district of contingency. And again, the exhibits in the ordinance talk a little bit about where the funds are going and the district is going to have. So I'd like folks to come up and talk about this, 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 that. Contingency currently, after the fall bump, sits at $753,000, almost $40,000. So this reduction would take it down to just over $500,000, 502,781 after this action. The other thing I would just note, and it's just very briefly, in terms of $190,000 in special appropriations, $70,000 of that would also be now brought in, which is actually by the police bureau. So you probably spend the money directly out of special appropriations, although we may need to make a technical adjustment to make sure that council all, just so you know that that, $70,000 of that funding will be spent through that program. That's a, that's real. Okay, good. Thank you.
Again, thanks to Andrew Scott from the budget office and Christine Moody, the chief for here with us. I'm glad to be through this. Thank you. So just to frame how we came to this number and the proposed projects, although the projects will be discussed in more detail, how they'll be actually allocated in a couple of weeks or so, I pulled together a task group of providers, survivors, and Commissioner Diana McKeel from the county, she's the mayor who works with the county, to just discuss what are the most urgent needs and one of the things that we can get done in the next six months. This is not ongoing funding, this is a one-time allocation, and it's to do the things that are the most urgent to do from January to June of 2014. So we came up with the three main project areas that are being proposed and then invited Dennis Maro from Janus Youth, Nina Senka, and Christine Lum from New York School of Design and Sexual Resource Center to help us wrap a little bit of the projects and work on those. Thank you. Thank you for taking the day to work on this important project.
Hey, good morning. Thank you all for the opportunity to be here today. It's going to be pretty loud for me. And I want to thank you, Amanda, specifically for making this presentation possible. We know that the girls and young women that we work with in the projects that you're considering lack two crucial things in their lives. One is knowing that someone really does care about them and the other is a role model for what they could be, who they could become as a strong, powerful woman when they believe in themselves. Your commitment, your determination and your leadership for them over the last several months and with this issue is a very concrete example in a way that we professionals never provide. So thank you for that. Approximately four years ago, I came before you to support a commitment which this council was about to make to provide funding for child victims of sex trafficking, funding to open the first and still the only shelter in the state for these children, and the first and still the only team of SARC volunteers and advocates to support them through their recovery healing process. This funding was a bold statement by city leaders at the time to combat the face that Portland had become, known as nationally, which was Portland, and to beat back our growing reputation as national hub for the sale of children for sex. I am proud to say that the money that you gave us was well invested, literally hundreds of girls as well as some boys have benefited. Half of them have been under age 15, two thirds of them come from racial or cultural minority groups, and over 90% live within the city boundaries that we are talking about today. When I talked with one of our youth at Athena House a couple of weeks ago, who was hoping to graduate and become a counselor herself someday, I said to her, "What does it take to get you out of this life? What, what kind of support do you need?" She said two things, Dennis. One is I need a safe place like Athena House that I can go to and keep coming back to when I run away, because I will. And secondly, I need somebody I can talk to anytime of the day or night about anything and know it's safe, and that's my SARC, SARC advocate. And with those two pieces, it gives me a route out of the streets. Our services and our system of services in Maluma County has developed into a national level, but we're still learning daily what it takes to reach these kids and help them find their way back home. Now we've reached a new milestone after five years of working with younger girls that grow up. SARC estimates that half of its caseload is now aging out of our current system of services by turning over 18. These, as you know, and I know, being 18 or 19 does not make them any less of a child. They still face the same risks, the same dangers that they had before they turned 18, and they still have the same basic needs, a safe place to stay, a safe place to come back to and a caring adult who is there for them. That's what this package of services begins to make available. The funding that would come to Janus Youth programs where I work will specifically be used to provide access for girls and if necessary, boys who are over age 18 to both emergency shelters and a long-term situation or home where they can live as long as they need it. We're in the process right now redesigning our entire shelter program based on what the youth have taught us and what our partners like SARC, VHS need from the, from us to provide services for these kids. The expanded age range will become a part of this process. Funding will help us add staff. The staff will allow the expanded age range, that will also allow us to deepen the level of services we're providing now for the kids, and that's one of the things that we have seen is missing for them. I'm also here today to ask that if you commit to this money, that you each make a personal commitment to work collaboratively with Maluma County to ensure an ongoing investment to sustain core services for this population. You can define what those core services are, but some programs, some populations do work on a temporary trial basis, those ones that we're bringing forward today, maybe some of those. But the truth is that core services for child, victims of child sex trafficking can never. But the truth is that core services for child victims of child sex trafficking can never, ever again be left in doubt if this community truly appears. Or we will just become the next set of adults who failed them, and the next generation of parents to deprive them of their childhoods. I am not saying that city money must continue, because I know that's part of the active debate, but I'm saying that the city funding and the government and the county funding, that somehow the governments have to get together and figure out how to provide ongoing sustainable support for these children. I teach classes for Mahoma County for parents going through divorce, and the first thing I tell them when they walk into class is that what we've found out over forty years of looking at history of divorce is that somebody has to grow up and be the adult. And what I'm asking as part of this commitment is that we all grow up and be the adults and sit down together and figure out, not how we just do what we're doing today, but how we maintain ongoing services that are needed between the two governments for the future. I want to thank each of you for your concern. I want to thank each of you for your caring. I know all of you deeply take this issue personally and for your personal commitment, and I want to thank you for that commitment now, and I want to thank you for that ongoing commitment as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis. And I should have mentioned in my framing that yes, indeed, the city and the county are committed to looking at funding for a wider range of, range of services. The county has been doing some brief explorations on mental health services, and I think this is another piece where looking at what the county puts in or what we put in is obviously a still a huge gap. Thank you.
Thank you. I thought this I do have to. Well, then, before you go, just, we have some questions there.
All right.
One, can you summarize what the city is, what the county is doing at this point?
What the county is doing, or in terms of the shelter, the county funds the shelter. It was a joint city-county funded project. $70,000 is removed, so the city funds a case manager for us at the shelter. The county puts about $350,000 into the shelter. The city funds two SARC advocates currently, the county funds another two SARC advocates currently. So the county and the county money went this year in the budget from one-time money, which it had been for the last several years, into a non-going funding category. So it is now part of their four budget service elements. And they actually have a planning process, working with a group of us as well, to look at add-ons to that system for the next budget year. So they're, they're planning on increasing their level of commitment and investment to this whole.
Yeah, I just wanted to key off your point about the city and the county, where you got, Chair VanderGall and I are going to make sure that our two budgets are proposed coherently. Because frankly, even for really great programs like this, our budgets are incoherent at this point in the way you just described, you know, from any management standpoint. The scheme that you just described is something anyone would recommend. I agree with that. And we tore into that question a little bit in the last budget, but we're tearing into it a lot more now. And again, it's a question that adults are in the room, we do have, you know, elected officials of both boards that are ready to work together and take up the questions of who should do what, who manages that, who provides oversight, because I don't think we're there yet on a lot of issues, whether it's homelessness or mental health, or, or these issues of trafficking. So I think you'll see us, particularly Chair Patrick Bellahide, this budget process will begin under our leadership each Friday until such time as the new chair, later this summer, or next summer. Second question I have for you is, my impression from dealing with the police bureau lately is that they are being quite aggressive in dealing with Johns and being more sensitive in dealing with victims. Is that your impression as well? What other recommendations do you have for us, and for me as the police commissioner, about the direction and approach that the police bureaus take in this traffic?
I'm gonna let the SARC folks and the NOW folks answer that, because they work more directly on a day-to-day basis. We sort of, we're sort of like the emergency room where the ambulance pulls up to. What I will tell you is the officers that I have worked with in the planning on this are deeply committed to it. And I will tell you that the change in the law the state made gives us leverage if we have not had before to really, I think, for the first time, go at the demand side of it. And my hope is, some of this money is also for some prevention work in schools, but what we need now is prevention work on the streets with the guys that are purchasing the sex. And with this new law, for the first time, we have a tool, we can do that. And that's why I hope that the police can, we've exercised continuing leadership and helping us get public now what, what the actual penalties are.
Yeah, okay, good. Now I'm very interested in hearing your comments as well on my impression so far, dealing with these issues, that they're very serious about applying that new. They are authority in just the way that we all, with a vote, can be focusing on purchasers rather than on the victims.
Yes, and the prosecutors are in the same place with us, so I think there's some real you can probably, yeah. Thanks very much.
Hi, I'm sorry. I'd like to echo. Just remind folks what SARC stands for. Oh, yeah, the Sexual Assault Resource Center. And I'm the program manager for the CSAT program, which is the commercially sexually exploited children program at SARC. It's a long-term advocacy program for child victims of human trafficking. So that's who I am. First, thank you for having us here today, and for your commitment to this issue. Before I get started about this particular grant, I just want to echo Dennis's gratitude for your funding over the last several years for the SARC case managers. Each one of those case managers sees between fifteen and thirty kids every month, and is able to provide them support and connection to resources and, and support through the law enforcement process, through prosecution process that they would otherwise not have. And it makes huge difference. So human trafficking is an increasingly relevant topic across the country. And so I hear a lot of folks across the country that call and say, you guys are doing great for them. What, what, tell me how you're making this happen. And, and the thing that's innovative and that everyone sees as innovative in Portland is that there's a broad scope of collaboration. And this includes city, the county, and specifically the police bureau advocate relationship is extremely unique. It's not happening anywhere else, and it's one of the things that makes this work so well here. So this grant that we're talking about specifically today would really continue to expand that partnership and help us, help SARC advocates be on the scene when police come into contact with the youth, and make the police, who are traditionally very scary and intimidating to these young men and women, partners and, and the ability, give them the ability to transfer them to services. And that's a really, that's a, that's a really powerful thing to be able to do, is build that community. They've seen the police as an ally instead of sort of this scary thing. It also gives SARC the opportunity to expand our relationship with drug and alcohol treatment and other resources, because as Dennis said, our population is aging out, and we've now expanded our age range from eighteen to twenty-three, and being able to connect them to more resources provides a lot of self-sufficiency for them, and it strengthens the whole system of care. It gives the survivors more option, more options and more, more ways to operationalize their own goals and become self-sufficient. And that is good, because it increases the determinants of health for these young people, it's good for them, it's good for our community, and it's good for the city who are ultimately being responsible for fewer resources across their lifetime. So I think that's all that I have to say about that. And I wanted to address your, remind me what your question was about the police.
Are they, are they, what you said, you're describing them as partners, which is good, I like.
Absolutely.
That description, that is indeed the expectation that I have for them in working with you and working with this now new authority, interesting law. My impression is that they are, they get it about focusing on the Johns and on the purchasers, not on victims of trafficking. I'm just looking for field confirmation or concerns that we're, are how close to being there are we in that consciousness of the police bureau, frankly?
I think we're very close to being there, and I think that grants like this expand our services to, to get there in a, in a broader, wider way. And for a wider age range, which is important. And also Officer Gallagher is here too.
That's good.
I have to ask these two out.
Good, thank you.
Kristin Lum Williams from New Options for Women.
That whole thing shifts down important.
The whole monster.
Whole monster would have been.
What is structured in the middle, you just like.
Oh. It's good to see you. I love you again. So you asked us to talk on, speak about what is the problem currently? What New Options for Women will do to address that problem, what this funding will do? So I'm gonna kind of go macro to micro, and then we will have Officer Gallagher speaking directly to that question, and I can touch on it too. So originally, New Options for Women is, was designed to be a response for women who were arrested out on eighty-second and Sandy Court prostitution. So we had women who were then court-mandated into our program. So over the years, we have adapted and changed to where we have people self-referring themselves, they hear about us on the street. Someone says, hey, I go to the street in that program, you know, and they self-refer, they call us themselves. We're referring, we have the girls from SARC, Janus, DHS, we have, we have FBI first people to us. So we've broadened our referral base from just being court-mandated women. And historically, traditionally, we have women older, thirties, forties, fifties who are in our program. And recently, we've had a shift where we've had a larger number of these youth aging out. These CSAT youth aging out, and they are adults now, and adult services are very different than youth services. So the New Options for Women program is a dual diagnosis, mental health and addictions treatment program that also provides case management. So we are designed to provide, each woman that comes to our program receives a mental health evaluation, an addictions assessment, and a needs assessment based, done by our mentor to assess if they need ID, a birth certificate, social security card, housing, you know, all of insurance, all of these things. So that is what we do. What we are not designed to be is an advocacy program. So we are designed to go out with officers like SARC is, after hours, weekends, to respond to these calls to these, these women who are still having those needs after 5:00 P.M., you know, Monday through Friday. So what we have seen as our program has adapted and changed is that the, how we can effectively and adequately meet the need of this population has changed and adapted. So this funding will allow us to have a full-time mental health clinician. Currently, we'll have a part-time, that falls under by many hats of things that I do, to directly work with these women to, as a preventative measure. So these eighteen and twenty-five-year-olds who are aging out of services, it has support from our community partners into our program to connect them to that addictions treatment and mental health treatment. And some of these need a more, not necessarily advocacy role, but a partner with that advocacy role of connecting to doctor, medical care, dental care, and inpatient addictions treatment, and, you know, to understand and process the trauma that the women we see in our program have endured throughout their life, that mental health treatment that they need to move forward with their life successfully. So as we look back on the program, these women who have been court-mandated over the years, who are thirty, forty, fifty years old, who have been in their life for twenty-something years, this is a preventative measure where we can hopefully rehabilitate these women between the ages of eighteen and twenty-five, so that they aren't out on the streets being arrested later on when they're older. So this funding, like I said, it will help us to adequately meet the needs that we currently are facing in our program. I came in September and spoke with all of you, and things are going really well in the NOW program. We're seeing a lot of, the younger women are coming to our program and working with our community partners on a more official basis. And this funding will really allow us to effectively step into what their needs are, because adult services are very different than youth services. And a lot of times they get, hey, here's the referrals, New Options for Women program, and they get lost in the shuffle, because they aren't used to adult intensive outpatient services. So this money will really help us be able to effectively do that.
I'm assuming a part, the partnership which we need to also includes training poor volunteers, and particularly culturally specific volunteers, to be that person who can go to court with the person who can help, you know, be the mentor that they call at three o'clock in the morning. That's, so they have that ongoing trust relationship with the volunteers.
Sure. So SARC does culturally specific trainings four times a year, and this would allow us to increase that volunteer base and help a wider variety of advocates. You can respond twenty-four hours, who are culturally specific, educated about trauma, educated about the issue, and can connect them to the appropriate resources. If someone wants to volunteer and to get training and be part of that, how would they contact you? sarcorogen.org. We are a website. There's a way to sign up. Exactly, thank you.
My next panel is the Women's Bureau Office in my calendar, Sarah Johnson and Carolyn DePrest on the women's strength program. Part of the discussion, as was just mentioned, was we were looking at solutions, offered a tendency to look at immediate needs, and of course, that's, that's urgent. What we wanted to look at is how do we start getting more serious about prevention? I was horrified to learn that it's in middle school that both boys and girls become involved in this activity. And so there are wonderful women's strength, women's strength program came up with this proposal to expand services.
I'll go ahead and start then. My name is Sarah Johnson. Good morning, Mayor Dallas and commissioners. I'm the director of the women's strength program, and currently, women's strength still pays for unpaid employee line here for you. Thank you, I'm going to introduce myself. And what I want to start with is give you a brief history of what our program offerings are for those of you who don't know, and also why we are the right organization to implement this proposal as we go forward. Women's Strength has been offering free or taxpayer-supported holistic self-defense and violence prevention classes for more than thirty-four years. We have a history of success. And in addition to those specific classes for women, we also offer workshops that are co-ed, that are general personal safety workshops, for anywhere in corporations to shelters. With the two combined offerings for women's strength specifically, we've trained more than a hundred thousand community members in those thirty-four years. The reason our classes are taxpayer-supported is that we have volunteers that teach those classes. Between women's strength and girl's strength, we have fifty, what we call them as unpaid employees. In the thirty-four years of women's strength, we've utilized twenty-two thousand volunteer hours. And we have saved the city $442,000. And this is based on a national average of volunteer paying $18 an hour. So in 2008, Girl's Strength was founded based on the need in the community. Women's Strength offers classes for young women teens, but not for middle schoolers. And so Girl's Strength in its fifth year has trained more than four thousand girls, is in forty-two schools, including five school districts, and that same number of $18 an hour has saved the city $90,000 in just five years. And I also want to talk about, because it's specific to this proposal, that the majority of our offering is to any, all of our offering is open to any woman, you know, woman of any background and ability, including more than sixty percent of Girl's Strength students being from different backgrounds, ethnicities, and cultures. So, why are we here before you? What we want to talk about is the fact that we are very unique in our volunteers, are unique, that all of our volunteers are trained to teach their classes to be safe, emotionally, physically, for anybody who walks in. So this ties into girls for survivors, and when we offer a boys program, boys who are both survivors and violence prevention offering. Over eighty percent of the schools that Girl's Strength is taught in have requested a program for boys. Caroline has been talking about that a little bit before. We are, the other piece that I feel passionate about, Women's Strength and Girl's Strength are secondary prevention programs, we're risk reduction. I'm gonna let that sit for a minute, because it's extremely important. We want to get into primary prevention. We want to start teaching and prevention skills before the violence begins. So with this proposal, the new boys strength prevention program would introduce primary prevention to boys and also include male volunteers in our community teaching. With the proposed project, we would hire two part-time employees, they're contract employees. They would assist with the development of curriculum, volunteer and circuit training, implementation of the boys program. The goal would be by May of 2014, we would pilot two programs in schools, and by June, we have a comprehensive training program for volunteers that would be a hundred and twenty hours long. On that note, before I turn it over to Caroline, the other goal that's important for you all to know is we want to have a foundation that is sustained, that we can sustain after the funding ends. And so Caroline's gonna talk to you a little bit more of the why of this project.
Before we go to transition.
Yes, absolutely.
So I applaud you for looking at this as a question of upstream and focusing on prevention. And, and that's where we get, not only get our best results, but we save a lot of money, because we're ahead of the curve. I'm just curious, when you talk about the middle school, which really just, I think gets all of our attention. What are some of the documented risk factors at the middle school level? Because we're talking about children, I have, I have someone who's getting into middle school, it's shocking to hear that, so I'm just curious, what are some of the?
The stat that pops to mind before we talk about specifically CSAT, which comes to speak about, when Girl's Strength was founded, and I usually don't, I'm a woman and I get nervous about it. I founded Girl's Strength in 2008, I will own that. And one of the reasons we chose middle school as the age group is, in my research and research to students, educators, eighty percent of middle school girls lose their confidence by the time they reach high school. Seventy-five percent of boys gain confidence. So we get to high school and we have this inequival, and it makes sense, unfortunately, that there's a rooting ground for violence and for boundary intrusions. So that's a stat that comes to mind. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, and a part of it. And so I, this, perhaps this is for a conversation for another day, but, you know, my sense, having raised a daughter, is that precisely that, that, that sort of, those two trends you identify with. identify with, boys and girls, one of the ways you get at that is making sure that young girls that want to be involved in sports, for example, have that opportunity. Because that's an area where self-esteem is built and role models are coaching and things like that. I guess this is a whole range of common sense things like that which nurture self-esteem and mitigate against what you're talking about. At some future time, I'd like to know more about what those are.
Good. And I actually do think I'd like to make a segue, I'm sure you all do, segue to Carolyn who speaks a little more specifically about the program offerings.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Hales, for having me here today, and Commissioners for listening to us. But I'd also like to thank all of our volunteers, and I would, if you could take a moment just to stand up. These volunteers have gone through a hundred and twenty-eight hours of training to be Girl's Strength instructors, and we also have teachers and girls who are here for us today to speak with them. As Sarah said, I'd like to address why there is a need for a complimentary Boys program to prevent violence, specifically CSAT. We know that CSAT, in CSAT, girls are usually the targets, but our main perpetrators of violence, the exploiters and the Johns, are men. Girl's Strength has a high success rate in helping girls feel confident and safe. In 2012, we conducted an assessment of Girl's Strength's outcomes and effectiveness. We found that approximately ninety-four percent of the girls graduating from a nine-week program stated they experienced an increase in confidence and self-esteem. So what this means is that ninety-four percent of the girls, ninety-four out of a hundred girls, fork out into the world feeling safe and confident. So how does this relate to CSAT, you're partly wondering? Well, we know PIMS target a variety of girls for sexual exploitation, and one of the main characteristics they look for in a girl is low self-esteem. They don't look for girls who are quick to defend themselves and say, "No, leave me to make everyone listen. Girl's Strength provides girls with the tools they need to stay safe and make healthy choices. But wouldn't it make sense to provide boys with similar information? When I walk down hallways wearing my Girl's Strength t-shirt and holding my kickback, I encounter boys who say to me, "Why don't you offer a Boys program? It's not fair. Don't you think we need self-defense?" Yes, they do need self-defense. And while these boys are thinking about physical skills, an effective Boys program would offer a deeper exploration of the roots of violence, especially when we know that males are the main perpetrators of violence. So here's what national research and local research tells us about violence. One in four girls would be a survivor of sexual assault in her lifetime. One in six boys are sexually abused, and boys are far more likely to be survivors of physical violence in the playground. One in three is the ratio. McNoma County's 2011 Defending Childhood Initiative report states that four forms of violence that are most predominantly locally, are predominant locally, are domestic violence, dating violence, bullying, and child abuse. It continues on to say, perhaps, that the most disturbing finding for this community assessment was the normalization of dating violence and sexual exploitation among local teens. School-based counselors and nurses report that the youth they encounter frequently assume that violence in relationships is both normal and acceptable. This information makes me sad, but it drives me to do the work that I do. Both boys and girls need the information contained in a Girl's Strength program. So before I go on, I'd like to share a story with you. Two years ago, we had a girl that was sexually, prevented a sexual assault in her neighborhood by two older boys from her school. She told her parents she used her Girl's Strength skills, she broke the code of silence. Her parents decided to take matters into their own hands and not report. The next day, this girl went back to school. The girls, the boys were there. They blamed her, they called her a slut, and said it was her fault. This girl used her Girl's Strength skills again and told the school counselor, "We did file a report." What's amazing and sad, and in many ways brave about this young girl, and what I'm very proud of, is the detective actually came up and said to us, "That girl said she used her Girl's Strength skills to stay safe." I just want to put this out there, this is not a success story. Girl's Strength provided the girls with the skills they needed to prevent a sexual assault, but we failed the boys. What if the boys had been in a program that educated them on respecting girls and on differences and boundaries, and helped them understand why language choices such as rape face, hoe, and bitch are forms of violence demeaning to all women? What if they'd learned how to talk about their feelings, and they knew about the importance of healing after any traumatic event? What if they had learned that healthy relationships are based on equality and mutual respect, and the term "boyfriending" in human trafficking is a tactic used to recruit girls to sell for sex, not a caring, loving relationship? I leave you to ponder these answers, and I truly appreciate your time.
Mayor, Commissioners, I'm Mayor Hales, Department of Public and Police, Girl's Prostitution Team, out of East Bay City. Here to address that bridge between SARC and Lightworks, and that additional eighteen to twenty-five-year-old woman who are aging out of SARC, and helping get into the Lightworks program. Prostitution Team works both street-level and escort investigations, involving sex trafficking, targeting the Johns, the women involved in prostitution and their traffickers, who will be sometimes referred to as PIMS. During this investigation, we routinely encounter a high number of women within a range of eighteen to twenty-five who have forced work as prostitutes or other traffickers, who have had traffickers in the past who have been in prostitution, is the only way to make money and get by on them. This age group, this age group, the PCT, has the hardest time finding the health resources needed to get these women out of the lifestyle of prostitution. Have an advocate that's available, can know how to talk, can know how to game, can know where to get the help available, is instrumental in building the trust necessary to get these women into treatment programs that work with sex trafficking. Sexual assault resource and their advocates already have the experience in this area, and are well versed in working with young women, with victim mothers, and are having, who are having difficulty with this process. Lightworks' new options for women program provides ongoing treatment necessary to get these women out of the lifestyle of prostitution. SARC and Lightworks NOW program, provided with the main support police to play together, SARC advocates and the Lightworks will be able to bridge the gap that exists between getting these women from their initial police contact. Get to the treatment program at NOW, where they'll be able to get their mental health issues addressed, and deal with addiction problems, and receive support and services to complement that being members of our community. Prostitution Team routinely will give these women a break by not arresting them, encourage them to go see Lightworks. This is often met with distrust because they're distressed with the police girl and not working the programs out. Having these advocates available, twenty-four percent of them are working around the streets, bringing them back for recent talk now, or made contact on the following additional day, the day after, make that contact, it's huge in building that trust in the police department, and showing that Lightworks and SARC work together as a team, that Lightworks is out there, being able to help them out. It's been the experience of PCT that the women who engage in Lightworks NOW program are seen last or not at all on the streets or in the post-athletic spaces. Hopefully, it also means they're able to move away from their traffic groups, traffickers who are in the process of doing so. The NOW program addresses each woman's individual needs and gives her resources necessary to move beyond the way of life they're familiar with. Having the funding available, required advocates as well additional staff in Lightworks NOW program, can build a promising piece to the overall program given police enforcement. Can be able to get these victims help essential, so they can be able to believe in themselves, as well as helping them develop the striking lifestyle they're currently in. Thank you.
So might reflect a little more on, you and your team were really focused on this. Do you think that that understanding is permeating patrol folks throughout the Bureau?
It is, and we're currently discussing trying to get some, an educational piece, and like our advanced academy work, basically with maybe each class there, to make it a broader educational piece allows us to understand the prostitution team relationship and why it's not this crime that people think of as this, you know, this juvenile version that they want to do. So that's a topic we're having within our team, and hopefully we can get that into our education piece with other police programs.
Can you talk for a minute about the relationship and role of the school resource officers in this work?
It's huge. And I think having Girl's Strength, the Boy's Strength there, and starting this stronger agency, huge piece. Having that connection, the school resource officers, school resource officers help us trust them in the schools, and if I'm known as the go-to person, you know, the students that have a problem, they're looked at as an advocate, not as a person that's, you know, the police or their boss, somebody that people actually trust them to go to now. And providing them, as I talked about, it's always a huge piece to have these school resource officers who can be trusted and, you know, teach at schools, as well as be there to provide assistance. I wanted to address the question you had earlier about the Johns, that we routinely look for breaks, do women that are out on the streets, try to increase the faith in Lightworks, give cards and pamphlets for them, help them, go out of their way to help them steer them towards the resources that are out there for them. Rarely do we ever get a John, great, the Johns, we didn't always get charged, and are, one of the options they have is to get the Johns. We take pride in the fact that we have arrested more Johns in the last year, in the last couple years, I think, that we have arrested or charged women waiting on. So we do take it very seriously. We are leaning more towards a wider oriented focus as far as the police girl, and we're looking at other missions to target the Johns, trafficking, back, we're looking for the minor out there. So we're doing sort of a whole bunch of different facets out there, like I said, to target the Johns.
Great, thank you.
I have one final thing that I was thinking about as we're all talking. This whole package is really cutting edge. You know, in our research, I'm looking at Boys programs across the country, there isn't anything like what we're proposing to do. So you've got a great opportunity in Portland to really move forward, that's important, but it's really considered a health concern.
One that takes sort of feedback on that, I just recently feedbacked on a conference in Washington DC, this sponsor that you're all with. What we do as this team, our co-chair in Portland, is very unique, of the kind of frequency for us, and we do what, we work with these other groups, who's, what's SARC, what's Lightworks, right? Nobody has this type of approach that I've reported, so it's very.
And I just wanted to add, there's a lot more resources for you, Commissioner Fritz, on the competence of boys right now, and how many of our boys don't have activities that, when they do play sports, they don't have the same social interactions that girls do in clubs, where there's a lot of discussions on working on those skills, where they're falling in with local skills and how they fall behind academically in that aspect of student. So this is really, in many ways, cutting edge, this is, we've been trying to get funding for a Boys program for three years, where there's a lot more invested, and just awareness of what was happening. Thank you.
Let's, we have our advocates.
Yeah, go, Shanda.
We have seventeen signed up. The first group would like to come up together, and that's Adrian Livingston, Alex Bianram, and then Kristi Wheeler with Muslana and Katie. Could you come up, please? And you can bring us some extra seats if you want.
Oh, do you want?
Okay.
Why don't we, yeah, come on up. And slide the big microphone box back and forth to us, maybe with a range.
Thank you, thank you. Would like to start. Okay. All right. Mayor, Commissioners, my name is Adrian Livingston. I am co-chair of the Victim Services Implementation Team, and I am the Executive Director of Black Knight from Oregon. And first of all, I was like the Oregonians that thought that this issue was irrational, that it's there. But as I started to dig deeper, and this is really recent to me, I saw that, wow, this is in our home backyard, that we can't be blind to what's going on. And so a couple of things that I learned is really that honestly, this issue is multifaceted, is multi-dimensional, and Commissioner Fritz, I'm very happy to hear that you asked about what's discussed in the city. Because as I looked at the report that came out, the fact is, our African-American youth, and I'm sure it didn't really show the Native American population, but I know that's more invisible, and I would like to see more studies of what's really out there. The fact is, our kids are overrepresented in this area. And the other fact is, is this touches so many other areas, whether it's the foster care system, whether it's someone who's had childhoods in their background, or even broken families, I think, Commissioner, the fact that some of these kids, they come from broken families, so they can't, they don't take, they don't play sports. They are maybe single-parent homes, or even raised by hard grandparents. So the fact is, this is a huge problem, it's going to take many to really tackle it, and it's going to take big support. And with what I'm seeing, and I just really love, and I'm just extremely impressed by what our county, city, state is doing, seeing with the CSAT committee, with the Victim Services, and everyone coming together and seeing the collaborations, what I see is the county coming, I see city, I see the state, nonprofits, the religious community, all coming together, the philanthropic community, in fact, the philanthropic community is even learning more about this issue because it's a growing issue. If we don't get behind it, if we don't continue to put support behind it, and come together to figure out how we can make this sustainable, the problem is only going to grow apart. And so I really encourage you to support the budget as amended, but to thinking beyond that, to look at, what is our future goal? Because this problem's not going away. These Johns, they continue to think, how can I get by with these girls? How can I prey on those girls, and even young boys, who have low self-esteem, no matter what socioeconomic background they're coming from, because it touches everyone. And so I just really encourage you to support the budget, to really, but also really continue to think of, what does it look like for young boys?
Adrian, can I just respond to one thing you said?
Yes.
Something profound about, about different family circumstances of kids. Remember that the great Charles Jordan, his, one of his favorite expressions about play was, "It's more than funny games." That when we get kids out in group activities, we're training good citizens, we're building leadership skills, we're protecting them from bad things. And I'm glad you said that because Commissioner Fritz and I are occasionally criticized for thinking that the city has a role in building and upgrading ballfields, addition schools throughout the city. The arguments you get sometimes are, stay in your lane, or why are you doing that? Or why aren't you investing in the classroom? And my view is, it is the classroom. That when you have a field that's operational next to a middle school or a high school, it means that after school, you can go out and do sports, and some of the great life lessons are learned on the playing field. My own bias is, I think, young women who have the chance to participate in organized sports end up having role models, make friendships, and gain status in schools through their participation. It's very important that they're developed. So when we don't have decent fields, we're cheating kids that need it desperately. So I appreciate your company.
And I completely agree with everything that you're saying, and hence, the reason I ask that you support, looking more at, you know, the favor.
Good morning. My name is Alexander Villarreal, I'm the new CSAT CSAT Program Coordinator. It's an honor to be for you, Mayor Charlie Hales, and Commissioners Amanda Fritz. So I am a survivor of the streets of Portland, between the ages of fifteen to eighteen, having been used as a commodity. And I am thrilled to be here in Portland because of the collaboration that was, services that were provided for me, that really allowed me to get out of the lifestyle. And as such, it's great to be on the other end, of seeing how the collaboration comes together to really create a wraparound care system for the survivors. And so I'm, one of the things that I'm thrilled to advocate for is, I'm excited whenever there's funding for services that would enable survivors, just myself, to get off the streets. So what I would love to see is continued collaboration between the county and the city. Because I, in my view, I firmly believe that we can never have enough people involved in providing services for our vulnerable children, our trafficked children. And so I'm really here to encourage and hope to see that continue to happen. So thank you so much, it's such an honor to be here. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Kristi Wheeler, and I'm a school counselor for Portland Public Schools at Vestal, which is housed on northeast eighty-second. I'm here with three high students who are participating in the Girl's Strength program this year, and I just want to speak from a preventative perspective. At Vestal, I see risky behavior day in and day out. I decided to become a Girl's Strength volunteer last year when we had the program for midour school. I was so impressed with the program, how it's laid out, the criteria that's tied to academic standards. And so then last summer, I decided to be a Girl's Strength instructor, which is credit commitments, a two-week task for, you know, eight hours a day. So now I'm teaching it this year to my students, and I started in eighth grade, and that's, you know, it's, I think, a perfect age to begin. But my concern is, and why I'm here today, is that the boys are missing out at Vestal. What I hear in the
Our next three will be Savannah Carlo and Claudia and Mark Hahn.
Thank you for having me here. I'm here as a mom. I have a daughter who's a fifth grader, she's 11, and I have a son who's a seventh grader at Jackson. He's going to be 13 in February.
Just say your names if I could.
Oh, I'm so sorry, Claudia Carlo. So I was very glad to have had the opportunity to complete the Girl Strength Program. It's an excellent program. I think all of our girls can benefit from it. I can't follow my daughter everywhere. And I just think kids get older and more dependent. She's on her own with programs or with ignorant skills that I think she'll talk about. But I know it gives me a lot more confidence as a parent. They address trusting her intuition, being aware of her surroundings, using her voice. And I was hoping she could do her voice for you, but I'm not sure she will. It's a really good voice, it's very effective. And she just has a lot more confidence in herself with the skills. She's been given tools, self-defense tools, using her voice. And I know that she's benefited from it, and I know that my son would benefit from it. In fact, when she started the program, he was very disappointed that there wasn't anything coming. And so the disparity that women in our culture know, we all know about. I think the disparity that our boys face is really not a dialogue that's been discussed enough. And we know, there's a lot of authors who've talked about the American boys are in trouble. They're the most violent in the industrial world. They're failing in the classrooms. And most of them don't know how to move. They don't know how to connect with their emotions. They don't know, they're not allowed to really do it. We don't give them the tools to know how to do it. And we have the resources that we're all aware of. And none of us want that for our boys. And so I would love to see, I think every parent would love to see a program. I know the boys would like to see a program similar to this, that's comparable, that kind of starts addressing the disparity that's coming in us, that our boys have. And we've talked a lot about it with girls and boys that are not benefiting from it. So thank you. It's great for them. And my son wants to do it too.
Thank you. Thank you, Savannah. We'd love to hear from you, we'd love to hear your voice if you might use it.
My name is Savannah Carlo. And I'm a fifth grader at Catholic Roadblock Church. Before Girl Strength, walking through the classroom was scary. And then we started Girl Strength, putting Girl Strength through personal boundaries, how to defend yourself during an attack. And then we were forced. After Girl Strength, I got a lot of confidence in my own self. You're still doing things.
You're not supposed to do those questions. See, my daughter already took this class. And it is a surprise.
I actually have your votes here. Hi, it's Mark J. Hahn, my junior, we do care. Actually, I highly support this, due to the fact that in my family, we're victims ourselves. Had we had such a thing as this being placed within our schools, we would have known a lot better how to handle the situation. So I like, I was partly honest, because I've seen a lot of this type of victimization happening. And I am absolutely against it. If it were my choice, the world would be changed completely, and I'll maybe have those types of thoughts. But I just want to thank all you guys for coming out here, giving your testimony, because that really means a lot. I truly do care about the situations which happen. The trauma is harsh, so do what you do and stay strong, no matter what.
Thanks, Mark. Thank you very much.
And next we have Michelle Munoz with Stella and Alexis. And they will be followed by Sarah Hobs and Stephanie Mathis.
Thank you very much for this opportunity to share our program with you. My name is Michelle Munoz, and I was lucky enough to teach these two girls in a classroom in the past autumn. So we just like to share a little bit about this program, particularly in terms of prevention in CSAC. So as well as being a Girl Strength instructor, I work with international teams and slavery to fight commercial sex trafficking of children through awareness and prevention initiatives. And when I first began to learn about CSAC, it became clear to me that a lot was fighting the demand and the equation of prevention was going to be a powerful tool that we had in stopping this crime. And as important and so necessary as aftercare is for those who have been exploited, we must also focus on keeping youth safe through education awareness. Wouldn't it be great if we didn't have to have aftercare, because we got to the kids before they ended up being traumatized through CSAC? So because perpetrators or camps realize so heavily, unattacked, heavily unattacked by boy running or dating as a means of prey and under targets emotional vulnerability, Girl Strength, I believe, plays a significant role in that prevention's role. In our program, we teach girls what healthy versus unhealthy relationships look like, how to set appropriate boundaries, and how to defend themselves against boundary-trusting intrusions using verbal and, if necessary, physical skills. As we talk to them about this issue of CSAC, we talk to them about how kids are ignored, so that they're aware of that, those tactics as well. Because those being exploited typically don't self-identify as CSAC in their situation, approaching this issue from a healthy versus unhealthy relationship point of view, while building up your self-confidence, is an effective and important prevention strategy. So this program really gives youth the tools to identify their relationships with themselves, as well as the power to say, no, I'm worth more than this. I'm worth being treated with respect, do you agree? Some people often ask me if the Girl Strength Program is effective, can I actually see results after just nine weeks? And I say absolutely every time. In our exit surveys, as Caroline mentioned, the girls consistently report increased self-confidence as one of the most significant things that they've taken away from class. And from personal experience as an instructor, I can tell you, you can often see sort of the light come on with a girl when she catches something that, oh, I hadn't thought about that before, I need to know that. And just as an example, one of our final activities in class is creating a personal little right in relationships. So we ask the girls to finish the statement, in any relationship I'm in, I deserve. And they fill in how they want to be treated. So it's sort of a roadmap for them going forward to be able to, so identify if it's a not a healthy relationship or not. And then we share our statements with each other. And one of the classes that I was teaching asked me, what's on my list? And so I told them, one item on my list is I deserve not to be held back. And the girl went, I got that. And I said, well, is that from personal experience? And I said, yeah, it was. The statement's, it nailed me a lot, and I decided I couldn't be held back. And I was very determined about it. And she kind of went, oh, and just started writing down. So I can tell you that I know she and other students lead that class with a strong resentment of self, and knowing that they deserve to be treated with respect, that we will act on knowing that they deserve to be treated with respect. So given the success that I've seen with the Girl Strength Program, I really have no doubt that programming that boys would just be another significant step in prevention of CSAC in our community. So I respect what we asked to provide the necessary funding to create an implement for a strength program, allowing me to be funding for this.
One, ladies.
Hi, I'm Stella Davies. I'm a sixth grader at Boston School, and I am in Girl Strength about two months ago. I'm Alexis Kierlitz, I go to Boston School in sixth grade, and I am in Girl Strength. Girl Strength is a very important program for girls, because it teaches them to learn to defend themselves. And this is important, because a lot of kids our age really need to protect themselves from behavior. We learned that violence has many stages, from bullying to physical harassment. And it is important that we are physically safe. We learn safe, I mean, we learn moves or strengths to save us for other lives. We haven't actually yet used our Girl Strength skills, but we tend to practice them along. We only practice them along because, I mean, people in our family could be future attackers, and if they learn your skills, they possibly use them against us. We don't feel the need to use our physical skills on students at school, but verbal skills can help us with all these kinds of school problems. As a student that walks to school, I feel, or I face the danger of any attackers all the way. Now that I'm aware of the possibilities that could occur, I'm always prepared to defend myself. The things that Girl Strength is talking is there are many terrible attacks possible, if I can defend myself. It's important to me, because now I know what can happen. I learned that I need to have my safe people around me almost all the time. These key skills, Girl Strength has taught me, will help me for sure. An idea is up in the air, as you guys are hearing, that they may start a new program. Do you think that the boy program would definitely reduce boy violence, bullying, and any other boy violence? And although girls have a special bond, that is tighter than some boys have, having a Boy Strength class would definitely help them. There are many boys of this age who just want to fit in. And they believe that violence can be a tool to achieving this goal. And some boys do need help with that. And this program is a really fine way, and it's the best way to do that. Girl Strength is the best way to teach people how to save themselves and others to revenge. We are glad that we got to be a part of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
And then our last two are Sarah Hobbs and Stephanie Mathis.
Mark.
Thank you for being here.
Go ahead.
My name's Frances, this is Sarah Hobbs. And I am very concerned about funding concerning older survivors who are aging out that I have got to address. And that is the issue of vocational training that will translate into them getting jobs. My concern is, if that doesn't happen, and they can't meet their needs, basic financial needs, out of stress and desperation, they may go back to the streets. And I am wondering, is it through programs or funding within the framework of the budget, is there an organization that is working on this issue? Because when I look at human trafficking, I've worked in a very, very organization, Global Transitions Global. They have amazing aftercare, but they also have amazing vocational program. Because they have seen without marketable skills, the victims are at high risk for being victimized again. So in a nutshell, that's what I wanted to say. I actually did come to speak as of the issue. This is the second time, as a civilian, I have sat here when the budget for the human trafficking issue has come up. It's a very serious issue. So that's the question I proposed to you. Is vocational training part of the aftercare program for the older survivors who are due to age?
Sarah, thank you for raising that important point. It's probably a conversation that you and I need to have with New Options for Women, because I know that that's part of their services, is connecting people to that ongoing wide range of support. It's a very good point.
But correct me if I'm wrong, but did they say the large majority of their clients are older? I'm thinking more of the 13 to 18 younger group.
Right, so the 13 to 18 are mentored and helped by the Janus Youth Programs. And then what this funding does is allow that 18 to 25 year olds to get services from New Options for Women and the other, and continued services from Janus when they age out over 18.
Okay, so vocational training is part of it?
We will check into that, but that's my understanding. Thank you, I'm really glad you brought your point.
Thank you.
Excellent, thank you.
Hi, my name is Stephanie Mathis. I'm an adjunct professor at the Warner Pacific College, which is pretty close to Southeast 82nd, or a faith-based, diverse urban college. I'm also a licensed pastor, and from the Evangelical Covenant Church, my mom and my wife. And I'm the former executive director for an advocacy organization that actually helped pass the first trafficking legislation in the state a couple of years ago. I really wanted to say thank you first to Commissioner Fritz. We contacted her as I'm teaching this class, and she opened up the hall, great hospitality, and also educated the students about this issue. I really appreciate that she is committed to the work, especially for speaking up for those who are the most vulnerable in our community. So thank you for that. I kind of wanted to share a little bit personally, from my own faith perspective, and I'm going to hopefully talk fast, because my meter's going to run out soon. But I truly believe that God sides with the poor and the marginalized. From freeing the Hebrew slaves in Egypt, to the good news of Jesus that brings liberation for those who are poor and most vulnerable and marginalized in our community. The students are not here today, because it's finals week. So I'm proud of them for being in class and not coming, but I'm here to represent them. These amazing freshmen that I have been able to teach this past semester have taken this issue and understanding of advocacy and voice and story and justice. And they led a chapel for the college, all out of their own original work and thought. It's on the Warner website, it's 30 minutes long. If you want to look at it, it's really quite inspiring. These freshman boys spoke up in front of a college campus about strip clubs, and how we speak to one another, and that no means no. And I think this Boy Strength Program will really be so beneficial. We had women in tears in the chapel, the president was in tears, because we know the deep impact that a freshman boy would say that to their peers at this age. Even at 18, I can't imagine what it would be like as a sixth grader if they got them. So like Charles Winnie, who coined the altar call back in the day, it was actually an altar call, was actually to sign the petition to abolish slavery. And so that's what the students did, and they wrote this petition, and they received 200 signatures that day. So I'd like to read from their own voice words, the letter that they wrote to you. Dear Mayor Hales and Portland City Commissioners, We are a class of college freshmen at Warner Pacific College. Through our first-year learning community class entitled Faith, Justice, and Portland, we have been learning about the issue of commercialized sexual exploitation of children in Portland, and the massive impact it has. Through our studies, we have come to see what child sex trafficking industry really is: modern-day human slavery. Girls and boys are being taken against their will and being forced to commit horrible sexual acts to strange and dangerous people. We cannot let this horrible atrocity continue within our great city. And these vulnerable children need our help. We must not turn a blind eye to the needs of these children who have been taken advantage of. The funding for these vital resources could make a drastic impact on some of the most marginalized persons in our community. If girls had help with recovery and healing from sexual assault, violence, manipulation, they could live better lives and be less likely to return to the streets. If survivors had beds to return to, just a small place to call home and sleep safely, they could get back on their feet into a healthier environment. And if we could teach more young kids about the dangers of these relationships that pips build with young girls and boys, we could kill the problem at its root. The average age of a female victim is 12 to 14. And the average age of a male or transgender victim is 11 to 13. We need to warn and give kids proper whole-person education when they are most vulnerable. Our class, along with the Warner Pacific College community, urges you to approve Commissioner Fritz's entire budget for class. Respectfully, the Warner Pacific College Faith, Justice, and Portland freshman class. And along I have all the signatures, and I have one for each one of you. Thank you so much for your time.
That's great. Thank you, students' scores as well.
They are incredible. And I'm going to go pay my meter.
Thank you.
Number staff, thank you. All right. No one else signed or testified, or else wants to speak?
So there, I would move to put emergency pause on this ordinance, so it should be effective on a basis.
Just a second. Any discussion? And a roll call on putting emergency pause on this.
Melody.
Hi.
Fritz, hi.
Ish. Hi.
Hales.
Hi.
Okay, now a roll call on the ordinance itself.
Melody.
Really appreciate all the people who came to testify today, and all the good work that folks are doing, and we're proud of them.
All the Warner Pacific students just made my speech. I don't need to, but you had the reasons, right? Thank you all for being here today. This is a partnership, and it's crucially important that it continues to be a partnership between the city and the county and providers in the community. I'm very excited about adding the Boy Strength Program, having benefited from more strength while my daughter was a teenager, it made a difference to both of us. So thank you all for being working, thank you also for your support on this. Bye.
Ish.
I want to start by thanking Commissioner Fritz for being our champion on this issue, and for making sure that it is a part of the program. I want to thank everyone who took time out of their busy lives to be with us today, but particularly, I want to thank the young people. And boy, were they impressive. Some, let's get them around. Someone who testified gave us sort of an admonishment, which was, make sure in the coming budget that we're clear about roles, city, county. And I know Mayor Hales, this is high on your agenda, and I would say that there's a number of areas where I would like to see clarity going into this budget. Because we have shared responsibility and shared funding over a number of things. Obviously, this is a priority topic. I think that the funding for older adults and homelessness, in addition, should get the city's attention, so we're clear as who's doing what. And I think this is the budget year where we want to avoid having people at the 11th hour coming and making pleas that we fund things that we've already established a cornerstone. Now it's just a question of who pays for what now. And so I accept the challenge that's offered by someone who. So, and I just want to close by saying that, when I heard the data about the age range where children are at risk, we're talking about 10, 11, 12, 13-year-old boys and girls. I mean, it is so shocking. I have a nine-year-old at home, fourth grader. And the other piece of this discussion that I don't think gets enough attention is, where are young people getting these messages that are so unhealthy? And I feel like I have to barricade the front door of our house on a regular basis, you know, screen the TV, check. I have a nine-year-old, and, you know, he's got a lot of positive role models between TV and videos and video games and movies and texts and lots of other things. He is bombarded with ugly, violent, sexual messages that are inappropriate. He's nine, and he has two parents who spend a lot of time screening that stuff. So if another child doesn't have a loving, caring adult at home, or is spending a lot of time by herself or himself, who's screening this stuff? And then why are we surprised when people act on this garbage? So in addition to applauding your work on prevention and treatment, let's also draw, let's spend some time looking at the source for some of that garbage that children are being exposed to that's actually shaping behavior. And it's kind of signaling it's okay to use this language or this behavior with a young girl. So anyway, I appreciate it, Commissioner Fritz's leadership and all of his testimony today. I'm pleased for that.
Hales.
Well, again, and a thank you for your advocacy and for all of you who put together such a great presentation today. I want to reiterate what I just said about budget. Every public service that we provide, no matter what agency provides it, but it's our county or some agency, needs to be, being a clear public need, and needs to be well-managed, and needs to be accountable. Obviously, this set of services needs to be, obviously appears to be well-managed, but it's not very accountable at the moment, because we've got this mission action, not just this program, where the city is doing some of these functions, and the county's doing some. And I am bound and determined to help with Chair Mattenfield's help to sort some of that out, so that you, as advocates and citizens, know who's in charge of a public service, know who's responsible for getting work done, and we all can measure how well it's working. That should be true for police controls, fire and rescue, and street paving, and libraries, and every other function that we provide as a team. So I'm really happy that actually Chair Mattenfield is determined on this longish subject as I am to get declared, because I think we all need that. I've got my pledge to keep working on that. And at the issue itself, as it happened on the way into this council session, I got a couple of messages on my iPhone, because we are all immersed in information all the time. One was from my daughter, who now lives in Brooklyn, who's a strong and confident 26-year-old young woman. And she, I know, I don't worry about her walking the streets of New York as much as I might as a parent, because I know she's strong and confident, and that she has those values of autonomy and empowerment that got communicated to her by her parents and by her community. These programs are very much about that, and I really appreciate the point about, as a father of sons as well, about making sure that we expand this thoughtful preventative effort to young men as well as to young women. The second message that I looked at was unfortunately much, much less heartwarming. And that is, I saw the crime statistics year, year over year, I get it each month, of course, beginning of the month, how are we doing in public safety in Portland compared to last year? And I just got the statistics through the end of November. And fortunately, overall, our crime rate continues to fall. This is true in almost every American city, with some cities as exceptions, and with some, unfortunately, areas of criminal behavior as exceptions. Murder is down 46% over last year. And that's great. It also reflects, I hope, the success of prevention efforts aimed at gang afflicted, gang affected, young people in our community. We still have a problem there, but we've made progress. Armed robbery, down 9%. Aggravated assault, down 8%. Rape, up 6% year over year. That is a tragic statistic, over 200 rapes in our city in the last 12 months. So we've got a problem as a community, we've got a problem as a society, and I think the uptick in that crime reflects the larger issues that this ever is trying to address. So as your police commissioner, I not only want to make sure that our police officers are oriented the right way with respect to these crimes of trafficking, it sounds like you're doing a great job, and I appreciate that. But I also know that we have to, we have to spend on prevention, just as we do with gangs, we have to spend on prevention. As a society, if we have any hope of reducing that number, because we'll never have enough police officers on enough street corners to protect unprepared women from sexual assault. It's not going to happen. And we're never going to have enough police officers on enough street corners to arrest every John. So we have to get upstream to these issues, and that's what this is about. So I appreciate the good work. We will continue to work to clarify roles and responsibilities between our local governments about who's in charge, who does what, who's accountable. But in the meantime, I'm very happy to support this effort. I also want to reiterate to this city council for the work that we all did, the difficult work that we all did on the budget. We were able to make this decision today, because this council dug deep and made difficult cuts in the general fund budget at a time of a historic low in the resources that we had available to the city. We also set aside a contingency fund that was sufficient to allow us to actually make this decision today, and still have some money left in the drawer for some other critical need or some other emergency over the course of the rest of the year. So well done again to this council and to our heroes, giving us the resources to be able to meet a critical need. Thank you all. Bye. Thanks, everyone. Let's take a two-minute break and then take up the 11:30. Let's take a two-minute break and then take up the 11:30 answer.
Yeah.
Are you sorry? It's 11:00 answer? Well, it's time to be certain that it's like. Careful there.
All right, we will be taking a break.
I would be very glad to hear. I would be very happy 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 to hear.
Okay, I think we can resume, because we're going to make our presentation and push it to the next quarter, and do you want me to leave the 47?
11:47. Next half quarter on the first year results of the City Core Chronic Disease Management Program, Healthy Foundations. I'll be the host.
Great, thank you Mayor Hales, commissioners. And Caitlin, Director of the Bureau of Public Resources, who will be today is Kathy Bless, who's the manager of the Benefits of Wellness Office, and Dr. Neil Mills, who's the Medical Director of Moda, and also Rod Hart, who's the Director of Health and Social Moda. It is with delight, actually, with wonderful pleasure, that we are here to provide you with a report on the first year results of the City Core Chronic Disease Management Program called Healthy Foundations. The program is a collaborative effort by the Benefits of Wellness Office and Moda Health. And I'm going to turn it over to Kathy Bless, who's going to review the first year results and then we're going to ask you to set up a report.
Good morning. Thank you, Ann. Kathy Bless, Benefits of Wellness, Shannon. This program is possible because of the partnership of Moda. Dr. Mills, Rod Hart, and the extended Moda team are incredibly dedicated, innovative, and collaborative folks. Sally Hill and Joel Michaels are also here representing Moda today. They helped us create this unique opportunity within the city, and I'm very grateful for that. The mission of Healthy Foundations is to create and sustain opportunities that empower individuals to become their own healthcare advocate. This report today will make clear that we are having some success. Run large claims data. In the plan year ending June of 2013, we had 380 people using $20 million in healthcare at an average per person cost of $54,000. In fact, since I've been the benefit manager, our experience for chronic and large claims has been staggering. Nearly 50% of the total dollar spent in the last five years are for less than 5% of the participant population. In taking a closer look at this data, it also showed that high-risk participants' costs were increasing by 43%, using their primary care physician less and using emergency rooms more. In Plan Year 2010, the highest-risk population had 163 visits to the ER, and in Plan Year 2011, it did 241, a 48% increase. Changing our culture, our behavior, was critical. These individuals struggle with the complexities of their health, and they also struggle with the impact it has on the rest of their lives at home and at work. We are not unique in this statistic, but we needed a new approach. One of the most challenging, or one of the most important and most meaningful ways I began to meet this challenge was to partner with Moda and create Healthy Foundations. We've been talking and collaborating since. We discussed other successful programs around the country, including patient-centered medical homes, mobile care teams, and hotspoting. We chose to consider the relationship first, to design a unique solution that builds trust and connection as a cornerstone, a solution able to address an individual's barriers to self-advocacy. We spent lots of time talking about what participants experience when they seek services through regular channels. We developed a model that illustrates what we believe was the current reality and what was the ideal. It was up to the participant to be the expert. We expected them to understand everything about how to access the best-in-network care at the right time, every detail in a complicated system. We expected some of them to manage all of this while they were really sick, or while one of their loved ones were sick. And I'm not sitting here trying to suggest that planned participation should not be held to a certain level of self-responsibility. That would be a contradiction to the mission and my intention. But what I am suggesting is that at critical stages, all support and building trust are game-changing opportunities that we can't afford to miss. Our first outreach was in October 2012. Moda sent invitations to 37 folks that we really wanted to connect with. During the first year, there were 255 invitations sent out with a 28% activation rate. For this report, we included 71 participants who were in some stage of the program at the one-year mark. The program enrollment continues to grow. We are learning and improving the data, information, and outreach models. One of the important values we understood from the beginning is that we needed to begin slow to ensure that the most important piece of this type of outreach, the connection, was not lost. We needed to ensure that each person coming into the program got the attention they needed. Since this report was created, we now have a total number of 90 participants and 51 folks in the active stage. About 60% of the participants are women, 40% are men. Participants can be the employee, spouse, domestic partner, independent child. 80% of the participants are over the age of 50. In all of these stages, the program is intended to be comprehensive, coordinated, client-centered, and inclusive of a member's family. The disease chart identifies the types of chronic illness that is most prevalent within the Healthy Foundations population. This chart also mirrors what we know of the disease burdens within the city core population. From all the work that has been done to put this program in place and throughout its first year, a profile emerged. Participants for which this program was developed generally have similar issues. They have high chronic disease burden, high cost utilization patterns, failed provider interventions, challenging socio-behavioral life, low trust and self-esteem, wary of payer-provider and employer involvement, and overwhelmed with priorities and decision-making. It feels a bit overwhelming when you look at all this data, but the care team is ground running, and the results are great. 59% of individuals who are in the active stage of this program have lowered their risk scores. The Healthy Foundations care team are making a difference. The care team had nearly 1,400 in-person member meetings in the first year, and they would meet participants wherever there was an opportunity to support, for support and health promotion. They went to their homes, markets, healthy restaurants, medical provider visits and hospital visits, fitness centers, parks, promenades, and other community events. While the city's of Portland's overall emergency claims had a reduction of 11% last year, Healthy Foundation participants had a reduction of 50% and a 37% reduction in cost. We have also seen some encouraging signs regarding inpatient care and positive trends towards a shorter length of stay. 44% of active members had reduced costs per member per month. 41% of active members have reduced outpatient visits, and 32% have decreased specialty visits during active engagement. We did see an increase in preventive care and an increase in the cost of those services. We also saw a 38% increase in other specialty visits like complementary care, psychologists, dermatology, during active participation.
That's a cost per member in that graph before?
It is a cost per member, yes. 33% of participants increased the number of prescriptions they were taking, and this resulted in a 66% increase in the cost of drugs per member per month in this population. Being compliant with medication is important and can be a significant, can lead to a significant improvement in a person's quality of life. While some felt costs more and some costs less, the overall picture was very positive, with 2/3 of the active group using less benefit dollars and improving their quality of life at the same time. We are doing the right thing. Improving social engagement, depression, pain levels are known to positively affect chronic disease outcomes and conditions like diabetes and cardiovascular disease. Our results show improved self-management, decreased ER use, cost, and increased quality, and that is a great start. The care team also found significant improvements in overall depression rates and improved physical capacity for those individuals dealing with chronic pain. Member satisfaction is also very high. All participants who have been in the active stage for at least six months feel that the overall experience is positive, and they would recommend the program to others. Participants also felt the program was tailored to them, improved their capacity to self-manage, and the Healthy Foundations team cared about them. Future plans include growth and increased participation for sure. Then we also want to add different communication strategies like group meetings, newsletters, and a Healthy Foundations webpage. We also want to include video conferencing for members when it's sometimes hard to meet in person, and also provide group exercise and stress management experiences. We look forward to keeping you informed of our progress. Thank you for the opportunity to come and report to you our success, and I'm happy to take you answering any questions you may have.
Thanks. More for Moda.
Sure, so to very quickly summarize what we just heard from Kathy here, is this is a Hot Spotters program where we identify that top 5% of the healthcare utilizers that are the city core members, and we've built a special program for trust where we're able to help abuse the healthcare system in a much more constitutionally manner and improve the quality of life.
And I would just agree with what Dr. Masters stated in terms of just, it's really about the relationship, and it's very much of a release approach, the disease really secondary. It's really addressing all the other issues that are typically in people's lives and part of people's gender health problems, whether it's caring for an elderly parent or just the child. Oftentimes, the caregiver itself doesn't have it taken care of by the people. And the intent is to not only impact just that individual, but the entire family unit.
Great question. Just a little panel.
This is more common than question, but I just wanted to stress how proud I am of the city doing this program. This is cutting-edge stuff. Like a couple of years ago, Atul Gomanday, an coworker, had an article called "The Hot Spotters," and described a variety of innovations in healthcare. One thing highlighted was the Atlantic City Casino Workers Union, which is self-insured. And they adopted a program like this for their healthcare coaches doing intensive outreach to the highest healthcare utilizers. And I met with Kathy somewhat beforehand at the office and was talking about that, and she said, yeah, actually, we're working the program just like that. And several months ago, we invited some representatives of other governments and some corporations to hear a presentation from Kathy, Dr. Mills, and Mr. Hart about this program, including representatives from the position of task cards group, for example. And I think people were very impressed, and some of them said, we're going to go back to our corporate folks and figure out if we should start adopting a program like this. The thing, another thing to stress is that traditionally, I think the assumption has been that the way to reduce costs of healthcare for employer is to dump more of those costs to the employee and raise, you know, co-pays, raise deductibles. And the fact is that to some extent, those strategies can be counterproductive, because you encourage people to avoid care that they need. I think as Kathy was saying, you know, medication compliance is actually an important thing. You don't want to deter people from the medication that's supposed to be taken. And so I think that this is exactly the kind of thing we need to be doing to help our employees that that means actually being healthier to reduce our healthcare costs. And, you know, people in the thought about healthcare talk about bending the cost curve. And I think that if we keep on adopting innovative programs like this, we'll be able to bend that curve like that. Steve, I can follow up on that smart third bit. Ever since they renamed Rose Garden to Moda Center, we not only have the Brooklyn one on the historic one, but the first time in my memory, starting five, it stayed injury-free for 20 years, so I wonder if it's a positive thing.
They'll take credit for sure. Actually, I do have one question. Kathy said that 44% of the active group reduced their per member per month cost, but I think elsewhere it was something that said 65% reduced their overall cost. Can you clarify what's going on with terms of cost?
I can.
Why don't you start it, and I'll alter my.
So individually, when someone is reducing their own individual cost, they could be using different providers, taking different medications, not going to the emergency room. So they're redirecting their care in very specific areas that are more appropriate.
Yes, that's a really good point. So it was one of the ways we determined success, because we considered what results should look like at the end of the first year when we actually rolled this program out. So we strongly believe that there should be an increase in primary care utilization number one. And I just wanted to emphasize there was, you know, a trend of negative for the overall spend for the entire city.
And I just wanted to emphasize there was a trend of negative for the overall spend for the entire city working group over this past year. And again, when you're addressing that top five percent, it only takes a small change in the way that you guys don't care to see that overall.
Right, so being forty, forty-four percent or forty-one percent that reduced their costs, but then sixty-six percent reducing their overall costs, it relates to just how that care is being delivered and the types of services that they had in the prior standard. This program came about after discussions with like many of the candidates, is that right? It came about in the same, yes, with discussions with that group and directly with Moda. This is an example of one of our committees that I have been part of that we have at End of this Labor Management. And everybody's focused on how we reduce our healthcare costs while at the same time taking care of our employees. So it's a wonderful committee. When did we start? Looking at this machine, this program, when did Deshie get going? So we started in August two thousand and eleven, beginning to talk with Moda. That's why we have a number of statistics from that two thousand and ten, eleven plan year. And it took about a year and a half to get everything situated, to hire the care team that is specific to this program within Moda and to get that program off the ground. So we started very small in October two thousand twelve. It was thirty-seven invitations going out, making sure that we learn from that initial group, making sure that we had the appropriate type of care for them and as we increased our participation. It has been a very carefully thought-through program. And something I want to highlight for everybody at home, one of the intricacies is about healthcare confidentiality. So the partnership with Moda, so that we don't have managers, commissioners in the city government saying, you're not healthy, you need to go do stuff. It's very much done with respect for the employee and ensuring that services rather than a mandate. Confidentiality is extremely important. It's why the care teams are part of the Moda team, not part of the city. I don't know who is on the, who is a participant of the Healthy Foundations program unless they self-identify to me, because they say things. But it was critically important. And even as we looked through data, it was data that was on the aggregate, and profiles were developed, but not on individuals. So we don't get, part of what we could report on is a change in productivity in the workplace. We don't do that, because that would mean that we would have to know who's on that program, and we don't want to do that. So we do ask them how they feel about their changes in quality of life, but Moda does through their assessments, but we don't get that data.
First of all, I thank you Kathy for your leadership of the healthcare program. You've done an amazing job over the five years that I've been watching with you. And second of all, I hope that it's that we can figure out how to do our biometric testing with our employees that we had funded with the general fund and have to get, I can't guess, or maybe ask Andrew Scott from the Budget Office that we're allowed to use healthcare dollars to do that testing. But it seems to me that that feedback for employees, be part of this program's success, I believe, is the actual tracking of how we're doing. In giving the employee that feedback when you take your medicine, you feel better. And that seems like that's a given, but it's when you're busy trying to get your work done and not necessarily focusing on the other healthcare, having a team like Moda helping you track that and then pointing out, you actually haven't been to the doctors often now, we need you on events, those kinds of things. It seems to me we could expand that to the entire city population, that we could further decrease our healthcare costs. Even if we're just tracking blood work and blood pressure and weight and such once a year, it gives each employee that data, especially if you give them accumulated data over the last next years. Yes, I have actually put on a little more weight than I thought, or whatever that might be. That's just something to consider, that I hope the benefits committee can run a line on that, as to how we can restore that space.
Can I ask one question off that? This summer, at the Summer Free For All, we got tweets occasionally from a man, Commissioner Fritz, during the intermission of these shows, he would have people stand and do sort of makeshift exercise, get off the ground, get blood circulated. And reminds me that we have a lot of great people in the Parks Bureau, in our rec center, source who are best wellness ambassadors. I think it's someone like Chakamato, former Mr. Universe, has worked with Parks for fifteen years, is a guru around diet and exercise. We talk, every once in a while, when we have these presentations, we come back to this question about, would it be cost-effective for us to subsidize the fees that employees pay to be part of a rec center or some other provider to get the regular exercise they need, to also reduce their risk factor to that? Is that something we've addressed, or is that still in the pipeline?
It's still in the pipeline.
And I guess the point is, what Chakamato has taught me is that changes in diet, changes in lifestyle, make a huge impact on health. And if, if there's some way we can create incentives for our employees to have access to people like Charles and make it a regular part of their routine, I'm guessing we'll see some also dramatic health outcomes. And I'd just like to know at some point whether there's a mechanism to do that.
Yeah, I want to second that. Look for other opportunities, now that you've done this for a couple of years, you've got these results, you know, works, then let's look for ways to synergize. We do own and operate a set of recreation centers. Some of our members patronize other facilities, but we own and operate a chain of recreation centers where our employees could get more fit if they all went there. So that seems almost a no-brainer to me, that ought to be cost-effective. I know there's a cost, somebody walks in the door, so.
A lot of our fitness facilities at our community centers are the most popular, and they're very well-used. There's often a weight for the machines, and the machines wear out. So that, you would think that might be capacity, but it's obvious that people in the community are recognizing that exercise, and particularly the cardiovascular and the weight training, is really good for them at a very short time.
Well, just on that point though, Commissioner, that my recollection is that when we were looking at specialty programs for the African-American Healthcare Coalition and other groups, we're looking at utilization and access, one of the things I learned is that, is that if you look at the utilization of our rec centers, there are in fact hours of non-peak use. And we could even just, we could do pricing, but for example, with our employees, we could provide incentive, but also says, here are the preferred hours, and it's off-peak, so that we're not bumping up against high utilization areas. And it actually within justified.